...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Open Public Meetings Act, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines regarding the functioning of virtual meetings. This regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted at all appropriate locations.
Good evening. For Monday, May 10, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting. Mr. Dolan?
Present.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Jezwicki is absent. Mr. Loisi?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall is absent. Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Here. Thank you. We have a couple of minutes here, approval of the May 3 regular meeting and then April 19th executive meeting. Everybody okay with those? Any comments, questions, corrections? Oh, sorry. You could not send me? Okay. Scratch May 3rd. So we have April 19th, the executive session. No comments. May I have a motion to approve this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we get to engineering and planning matters, I just want to make a comment to remind everybody about the decorum of these meetings and that we follow Robert's Rules of Order. And in doing so, when you have a comment to make, when you have something to say, you must raise your hand and wait to be called on, and everything goes through the chair. We've had some incidents where people have been speaking out of turn, and then we don't have good recordings and good minutes from those meetings with everybody just jumping in. So I need you to raise your hand, wait to be recognized, and then you can begin speaking. And if you could, also state your name when you're speaking. And like I said, because of these recordings, and we just have to do it. Next up, engineering and planning matters. Gentlemen, do you have anything to say?
Thank you.
You have no resolutions this evening? Changes to the agenda? Porro, do you have anything?
I have one, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, application, the second application for this evening, Block 12201, Lot 1, Jackson Baptist Church. That matter has been asked to be carried. There is a question that requires the interpretation of the zoning board in consultation with the applicant's attorney, planner, and engineer. They recognize that. I received a letter confirming that for the same. I would ask that respectfully, based on the review of the meeting and the step that they have to take, that the application be carried to the August 2, 2021 meeting without the requirement of further notice. If the board accepts that carry, the public would be directed to the municipal website and municipal posting for participation via virtual meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gertner. May I have a motion to carry Block 12201, Jackson Baptist Church, to the August 2nd meeting?
And roll call.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Loisi?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chairman, is legal matters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to alert you that our Planning Board Secretary has left a package of material for your review and perusal dealing with current state of the law. I'd ask that you read that at your leisure, and then through the chairman, my recommendation will be to set up an executive session to discuss that material at a time, perhaps, again, like we've done previously, maybe scheduling the meeting a little earlier. So there's ample time to do that. But for right now, that material is, it's in the public domain, but I'd ask you to just read that and review it. Certainly, if anyone has any questions, they can contact the individual. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A little by review. Thank you. We just have to circle back for a minute. I need a motion to the came-in of Dr. Recording Secretary for this evening, May 10, 2021, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Swinging back, applications, our first application is Block 14101, Lot 18, Royal Property Management. Mr. Clee, as you're on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application for preliminary and final major subdivision. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into six residential building lots and one stormwater management lot on the subject property. Variance approval is limited to the drainage basin for deficient lot area where an acre is required and 43,000 square foot is provided. So of course, that's testimony from the applicant in support of that variance request. The application isn't really that unusual in design from that the board has seen before. A simple cul-de-sac within six lots off of it. There is development, or there's no development proposed to the north and north of the track, and no sidewalk proposed along that roadway frontage, but does seem appropriate because no new lots are being created. There are several areas which the applicant should touch on. One relates to traffic safety. The property is located adjacent to or very close to the intersection of Gale Chambers, Brewers Bridge, and South Cookbridge Road. So some testimony from the applicant regarding traffic safety and the design of the intersection that's proposed. This application also incorporates the new stormwater management regs. I don't know if the board may recall, but they recently passed or made a recommendation to the governing body that these new regs be adopted, and they have been. And the design incorporates green infrastructure, trying to reduce the hard piping and more rely on groundwater recharge. There's drainage basins that are proposed between each lot. And a question is raised as far as who maintains that, what's to ensure that the grating is maintained? A future homeowner might want to put a fence down the property line. How's that affected responsibility of the homeowner to maintain these rain garden or these green infrastructure basins? So there's definitely some testimony from the applicant addressing those issues. The only other comment or question, the lots to the north, lots 19 and 21, if this new roadway that's being constructed is going to induce any variances onto those existing lots in a way of encroaching accessory structures or the ability to locate a pool. We've provided some technical comments to the applicant. That's all for now.
Thank you. Mr. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try not to repeat any of Mr. Clee's comments. Our office has a report dated April 21 of this year. Property is in the R1 residential zone where single-family detached houses are permitted principal use. We asked the applicant, provide architect plans or indicate on the plans the number of bedrooms, and if garages are proposed so we can determine compliance with the parking requirements from RSIS. The applicant's going to provide that information to us this evening. Last item I have is we asked for an estimated earthwork quantity so that the applicant or the board can determine the application's compliance with our new soils, soil removal ordinance. And that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, Attorney on behalf of the applicant. First, I just would like to thank the board's professionals. We took the opportunity, this year everyone's indicated, to try and make the applications the best they can be. So we had an opportunity to have a technical review meeting with the professionals to try and hash out some of the questions or concerns that both the professionals had, and thank Mr. Gertner for helping that meeting come along. As the professionals have indicated, this is an application for a residential subdivision. There are seven lots total in the application, six new single-family fully conforming lots, and one stormwater management lot, which does have a couple of variances. The site is about 8.42 acres in size. We do have this evening, we will be providing both engineering testimony from Mr. McFarlane and traffic testimony from Mr. Kennel. If I can at this time, if I can swear in, Mr. McFarlane?
Yes, sir. Mr. McFarlane, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony, information, questions, comments that you will be presenting before the board will represent the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, and to the, through the chair, some brief qualifications as to both engineering and planning testimony?
Sure. Graham McFarlane, last name is M-A-C-F-A-R-L-A-N-E, professional engineer, professional planner, certified municipal engineer, a principal of professional design services. I've been providing professional engineering services since 1987, professional planning since 2010, previously testified before this board many times.
License and nature.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Graham, if you can, walk us through the application. I believe we pre-submitted some exhibits. I'm not sure where you want to start.
Yes, maybe if we can get the aerial map up first. Yeah, so as indicated by your professionals and as indicated on the plans, the application is for a major subdivision of Block 14101, Lot 18. The site contains about 8.4 acres located in the R1 zone. It's proposed to subdivide the property into a total of seven lots. Six lots will be for future single-family homes, one lot for stormwater management basin, referring to the...
Wait, wait, hang on. Through the chairman. I know you pre, I don't know if they're pre-marked, so just if you can call this A1 and if you can tell us what it is. You told us it's the aerial.
Right. Referring to the aerial map, which is up on the screen, this is an aerial photograph that shows a subject site cross-hatched in yellow, and it shows some of the surrounding properties. You can see that the site is basically has the configuration of a flag lot, where we have about 100-foot frontage on Brewers Bridge Road, and then the site, you know, the property is wider in its rear portion. You can also see that the site, you know, located in the R1 zone is completely surrounded by existing R1 developments. Basically, every lot you can see on this picture, you know, for the most part, with the exception of a handful, are R1 acre lots compliant with the R1 zone criteria.
The date of the...
That aerial is from March of 2021. You can also see the proximity of the site to the intersection of South Cooks Bridge and also close to the intersection of Gale Chambers Road. South Cooks Bridge Road, Brewers Bridge Road intersection does have traffic signal, full signalization. And there was also a separate exit lane from South Cooks Bridge to Brewers Bridge, which is yield-controlled. Mr. Kennel will provide some detailed analysis of the traffic safety in regards to the location of the proposed street. Now, if we could refer to the plan set and just put up Sheet 2, which is the development plan?
Mark that, Sheet 2.
Thank you. Next sheet, please. So that we're referring to as A2, that's the development plan that's included in the plan set that was submitted to the board, bears a date of November 9, 2020. This plan shows the layout of the project as proposed. It shows the location of a detention basin in the front part of the site as dictated by the existing topography. It also shows a subdivision to create these six building lots along a single loaded cul-de-sac. The road, of course, is designed in accordance with RSIS requirements. This plan also shows the general location of house footprints and of driveways. All driveways would be double wide, so a minimum of 20 feet wide, and each driver will provide a minimum of four parking spaces. As to the number of garages, that will be determined by the eventual buyer of each particular home. It is our plan, our client's plan, for these homes to be custom homes, so this is not, you know, not tract housing, so we haven't determined architectural plans for the houses yet. They would most likely be individual buyers building custom homes, and it would be up to those buyers to determine what kind of home they want to build and how many, you know, what type of garage they want to have in that home. We do anticipate that all the homes will have basements. Of course, we did do a series of test pits throughout the site. Seasonal high water table is generally nine to 10 feet deep, so that will not impose any limitations on construction. As far as utilities, the site will be served by water and sewer coming off of Brewers Bridge Road. We do have a small off-site sewer extension that goes from the site up to Blue Heron Drive, just a little bit off the sheet here, which is the nearest connection point for sanitary sewer. We, of course, have had some discussions with the MUA about that, and they are in agreement that that is the most appropriate fashion to provide sanitary sewer collection. Not shown on this plan, they show on the grading plan, but between each of these lots, as Mr. Clee discussed, along the property lines right now, we have bioretention systems proposed. Bioretention systems are, they're basically a small detention basin that contain water-tolerant vegetation to promote groundwater recharge. That design concept of having multiple small systems throughout the development is in accordance with the current green infrastructure rules that have just been, you know, recently been adopted by the DEP for the updated stormwater management rules. I think it's important to note that we did provide that design on this project, even though this project technically is not bound to those requirements. They were not in effect at the time of this application, which dates back to November. However, we felt it was appropriate to provide that as a benefit to the project, and we do provide that type of design on this project. We did have a chance to discuss some of the particulars of those systems with the professionals last week, and there were some very good questions and some very good points raised, and I'm sure we'll get a little feedback from the board and decide what is the most appropriate way for long-term maintenance and operation of those individual systems. While they do benefit individual lots, they also, of course, benefit the entire project. So one can make an argument for, you know, frankly, for both directions, whether those should be dedicated to the town, whether they should be owned by individual property owners. And of course, we would like to get some input from the board on that particular item. As to the detention basin located at the front of the site, we currently have that shown as a separate lot for dedication to the municipality. It's my opinion that that's the most appropriate means since that detention basin is accepting runoff from the public street. Again, I know some board members may have a different opinion, and ultimately, I don't get a vote. The board gets to vote and decide on that particular matter. My opinion is that it's most appropriate for that detention basin to be dedicated to the municipality, as I believe the municipality has the means to better maintain it than do a bunch of homeowners in a small HOA. But again, we'll defer some discussion on that to how the board members feel about that. We have reviewed the letters from both board professionals, and we're in agreement with satisfying all of their technical comments. We do have a variance associated, again, with the lot proposed for the detention basin. One for its size, the size is proposed appropriate and as needed to provide stormwater management, and two for its width, because again, this lot has a unique shape that it only has about a 100-foot lot width at its frontage. 50 feet of that is utilized for the road, that leaves only 50 feet, you know, plus or minus, which technically is the lot width for that lot being created along Brewers Bridge Road.
Anyone have any questions, please, from the floor? Mr. Riccardi? Hang on, you have to use the mic, sorry.
Mr. McFarlane, it's Joe Riccardi, and my question is, these retention units that are between the homes, are they on, are they one unit that is on both people's property?
No, and perhaps we can go to the next sheet in the set, Anthony, to the grading plan, and we can talk about them in a little more detail.
Mr. Gertner, are we okay still keeping this A2 with the grading plan, or do you want it to be a separate? It's part of the... This is a different map, right? At this point, so this should be a separate.
Correct. And for the board members, if you go to Sheet 3 in your plan set, so what we have up on the screen now is the grading plan from the plan set. That plan shows the locations of the bioretention systems along the property line. These are basically five feet wide at the bottom and three to four feet deep maximum on each particular lot. We set these up so that they straddle the property line right now, but we do have some flexibility in that design. One of the questions raised by your professionals was, well, geez, what if a property owner wants to put a fence on their property line, they would be restricted from doing so? Would it be better to take, you know, this one and shift it, you know, 10 feet to the left, and shift the next one 10 feet to the left so that each system is on an individual lot? Then the owners could have a fence on the other side of the system, you know, without limitation. And I think that's a good comment. I think that makes a lot of sense. If the board, you know, feels the same way, we would certainly agree to do that.
Through the chair? I'm sorry. Look, Mr. McFarlane, you got to take the next step, right? Because we discussed, did we not, that you're going to have drainage from one lot potentially negatively affecting the other? You shouldn't just, respectfully, I don't think you should end that conversation there.
Agreed. We did discuss that, Sean, because these systems, you know, this system here in the middle takes some runoff from this lot and some runoff from adjoining lot on the other side. So I think that they would have to be a deed restriction so that, A, the runoff is allowed to continue from one lot to the next, and second, so that these bioretention systems are maintained in perpetuity, because they are an important part of the overall stormwater management system.
Well, that was my question. If there's a failure with any of these systems and it's straddling the property line, how do you, let's say one of the property owners doesn't want to pay to have it rectified, what do you do?
Well, agreed. I think that's what drove the discussion about, geez, you know, we think it's better to have a system on one lot, and then one lot owner is responsible for the maintenance of one system, even though its use is shared, there would be, again, there would be a restriction that would assure in perpetuity that it cannot be disturbed, filled in, regraded, or altered in any fashion.
Okay. And, Mr. McFarlane, I appreciate the extra work that you did marking those points of contention in previous applications, the parking, the driveways, basements, and all that stuff.
Well, we're trying to learn and listen with every application.
I appreciate it. Someone else, Mr. Riccardi?
Mr. McFarlane, it's Joe Riccardi again, and my question was, you explained that perfectly, but my question was, these basins, are they taking away from the acre lot?
No. They're considered part of the land area, just like an easement is.
Okay. And you answered my other question about how they would be managed, so, thank you.
Thank you. And just one other item that I did not point out in my discussion was that on the north side of the road, we're asking for a waiver of sidewalk, as we don't have any lots funding on that side, and we would have, you know, potentially have sidewalk over there that would never be properly maintained. So we have asked for the waiver from sidewalk on the north side of the proposed street.
And we typically require a donation to the sidewalk?
Yes, that's required by ordinance, so my understanding is there's no way around that.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
Michelle Campbell. The topography on that particular piece of property, I'm used to looking at that, I drive down that road every day. Is it higher on the, I guess it would be the north side, or is it a flat piece of property?
Actually, the highest part, highest point of the whole property is right about there, and the property generally slopes to the north and to the northwest. The highest point on a property is right about there.
So there won't be an issue with water running downhill except from their own property or the property behind the homes will be running toward them?
Like I said, the runoff right now, generally everything goes in this northwest direction, so that will all be intercepted by the new street.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to make a possible announcement, I don't think, it appears Mr. Wall may now be on. I just, can we, Mr. Wall, are you on?
Yes, I've been on for the entire application. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll recognize... Hold on. Mr. Peters, you were first.
Thank you. Graham, could you explain the location of the proposed right-of-way up against the adjacent property lines, and what, if any, impact it may have on the adjacent properties? Yes, Anthony, if we could refer back to the, I think, back to the aerial display that we started with. Again, the question that Ernie raised was, this property is adjacent to two lots, I believe it's Lot 19 here at the front, and Lot 21 towards the back. We have our proposed street along the property line, which is common to Lot 19 and Lot 21. That condition of building a new street along that existing property line actually creates now a front yard for those two lots. So it creates a front yard condition for Lot 19 and a front yard condition for Lot 21. Anthony, can you possibly zoom in the middle of this? Now, that's pretty good. That's good, yeah. You can see this is Lot 19, there's a single-family house. The house is here, and that's an accessory structure in the back. This house is about 60 feet from the property line. The required front yard is 40 feet, so it does not create any hardship or any difficulty for this particular lot. This lot in the back, which is Lot 21... in the back, which is lot 21, you can see that there's an accessory structure here. The house is here towards the, towards the north. There's an accessory structure here. This property happens to be in the R3 zone. So there, there's a zone boundary, you can kinda see it, you know, it's here. So this property's in the R3 zone. This accessory structure is about 35 feet from the, from the property line. The required front yard is 80 feet, and of course, accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard. So this does create a potential variance condition for this particular lot if they were to propose any alterations or modifications of that, of that structure. The benefit is that proposing or constructing this new street does provide future access to those two lots if they were ever to be, you know, possibly joined and/or subdivided in the future. That would possibly eliminate a couple of driveways out to Brewers Bridge Road. I believe that's in the interest of public safety. And so, so it does make sense to have that street right up against the property line. One of the alternatives we talked about was shifting that road, say a foot or two feet to the, to the south, leaving a little strip of, leaving a little strip of no man's land in there, which technically, you know, would then eliminate that front yard condition for those two particular lots. But I'm gonna speak for Ernie for a second, he of course would jump in. I think that we both felt that that's really not good planning to do that, ending up with that little strip of land that's not gonna be properly maintained and, you know, just could become a future headache. Thank you. The last, as it relates to the right-of-way layout, I wanted to make sure that the board understood that there may be an offsite impact that's not easily shown on the plan. We would concur, this is the, the better of the layouts. There are in town some no man's lands that are five foot wide and a quarter of a mile long that never get maintained, and the town ends up having to go in on someone else's private property. Because the only contiguous land that a strip along road A could belong to is the last house at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I doubt he's gonna go out on Saturday and mow his lawn for 1,200 feet up towards the main road. So we don't take any exception. We just wanted the board to have an understanding and some testimony from Graham. Graham, lastly, we do have a comment about earthwork quantities, you agreed to provide them. I just want to note for the record that the application is in fact subject to the township's sow removal ordinance. I'm, I'm gonna say if that ordinance is, is in effect, I'll, I'll agree. My understanding is that may have been overturned. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Anthony, if you could then refer to the, the other area we have, which was called the, the site access display?
Marty Fleming. So the road is running right up the property line?
Correct.
Any kind of buffer for those properties that you're abutting? Because lot 21, if I, as I understand it, is a farm.
Yeah, we, we don't have any buffer proposed there. I don't believe any is required by ordinance. We don't have any buffer proposed there. There will be, the, the curb will be located 10 feet from the property line, and I'm sure a natural, you know, a natural buffer will develop there. As, as Ernie and I were both discussing, you know, no one's gonna, gonna go out there and maintain that particular 10-foot wide strip. Technically, it's gonna be part of the right-of-way and would be, you know, maintenance responsibility of the, of the municipality, but I don't think that's gonna be, that's gonna be a regular item. So it would, in my opinion, just become a, a small, natural, vegetated area. Besides that, we don't have any buffer proposed, and I don't believe any is required by, by your ordinance.
Even though it's not required, would your client be willing to put something up there to protect the farm?
Are you asking for a fence, or are you asking for landscaping?
I'd go with either.
Did you have something in mind?
I do not. Something to keep the traffic away from?
We would agree to comply with putting, putting a buffer there, whatever the, the board and professionals feel is appropriate.
Thank you.
And if... You are correct.
A4. Just through, through the chair, just before we leave that point, it's really a rhetorical question. Should the board act appro, act affirmatively on the design as required? I think, and this is also out loud to Mr. Pupur, I think we have an obligation as a board to issue a certificate of nonconformity to that lot, because you're creating a nonconformity with the accessory structure now in the front yard. And you would, I presume, are you disagreeing with that, or would you agree that we have that obligation? Just so it's of record. They shouldn't, we shouldn't create additional variances. Do you understand what I'm asking?
No.
You're creating a nonconformity, correct? We agree.
On the other problem, on lot 21.
On lot 21, correct?
Correct.
It's a pre-existing structure, correct?
Correct.
Then if the board acts affirmatively and favorably on the design, and then based on the testimony, it appears it's better planning, does not the board have an obligation through the zoning officer, we're lucky he's here this evening, to issue a certificate of nonconformity on behalf of that lot? Because you are now creating a nonconforming, you know, that accessory structure is now nonconforming, just to protect the existing condition?
I don't think we disagree.
Okay.
I don't think it's our, we have the right to issue that.
No, it's a rhetorical question. I want to make, we have, the board has that obligation. I want to make that clear. And, and similarly, just to further emphasize, respectfully, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fleming's point, although I'm not certain, as a matter of record, whether that farm has gone through the county agricultural board for right to farm and what have you, I think Jackson, I think the board has an obligation to protect that right to farm as much as possible. So I appreciate the, the applicant's assurance of that. The third thing, and at some point, perhaps Mr. Kleek can help walk through this better. So I appreciate with the stormwater management, you went through the, some of the alternatives, but I think the, so the board has the alternative to weigh. Someone should testify about the alternative of leaving them where they are, creating an HOA so that the municipality has a single point of reference if those matters are not, if those, if those smaller rain garden-type basins are not maintained. And then the board has either or to debate which is the best. Just put that out there at whatever time the engineers want to discuss that.
I figured that, that part was gonna come when we spoke about the basin and ownership, and we're gonna loop that back in, but...
Whenever you want to do it. I just want to make sure you didn't forget.
Not a problem.
Mr. Martin, if you can identify A4, please?
Yes, A4 is a site access display. You can see that it, it shows a, shows an aerial, a partial aerial view of the subject property, as well as the intersection of South Cooks Bridge and Brewers Bridge Road. And then it shows views of three other photographs taken from, from different perspectives. You can see, let me just open up so I can see it better. As, as posed by the, the board's professionals, this, this display relates to the suitability and the safety of the, the proposed street intersection, which will essentially be where I have the pointer highlighted right now. You can see there is, there is visibility back to South Cooks Bridge Road. There is visibility back to the traffic signal, and there is also visibility to the north on, on Brewers Bridge Road. To the north, we have over 500 feet of visibility far in excess of any, of any ASH or rate-regulated standard. To the other two directions, there, the distances are indicated on the plan. I just wanted to, to get this identified and marked, and Mr. Kennel is gonna provide specific testimony about these distances and about the adequacy of the location of the street relative to the existing intersection.
Does the board have any other questions at the moment for Mr. McClellan?
Yes, we can call Mr. Kennel now to address the traffic.
Sure. Yes, Mr. Kennel, stand up again. Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and then through the chairman, some of your credentials?
Sure. Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates. I have over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've prepared over 100, over 1,000 traffic impact studies and testified in over 1,000 applications in 100 municipalities on many occasions before this board, as well as the Jackson Zoning Board. And I've been qualified by the New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert on traffic-related matters.
Are you a licensed engineer?
I am not.
You are not.
So Mr., so through the chairman, articulate how you propose your testimony to be received.
Well, again, as far as my qualifications, it's based on my over 35 years of experience to be under supervision of a licensed engineer. I've been recognized by New Jersey Superior Court on three land use matters as a traffic expert to provide expert testimony. I've also represented a number of municipal planning and zoning boards providing traffic testimony, and that has been how I've been qualified over the years.
I'm going to accept your credentials. However, I'm going to instruct the, the board to take that, take his lack of an engineering degree into consideration when they hear your testimony.
Not objecting, I'm asking for clarification, just, just so I could be clear. You're accepting him as an expert. I, I just am trying to clarify then what the second part of the comment is.
Well, I think it's the first time I've ever had anyone come here that was not a, was not licensed in the state of New Jersey to testify about, as an expert about a particular matter. And...
Mr. Chairman, if I may clarify, this issue actually came up on a remand on another matter, where a, an objector raised the issue of Mr. Kennel not being an engineer or not. That, that matter ended up settling by having Mr. Ray come back. But you can, respectfully, you can accept the credentials to the extent they're laid out on the record, which is basically what, what, what you're, what you're saying. You can articulate, he has 35 years of experience.
Right.
Where he went to school, whatever certifications, and to the extent that an engineer would be required or not, you would have to then rely on the board's experts to articulate potential differences.
Mm-hmm, agree. That's fine. That I'm okay with. I just wanted to make sure that the board understands that he's still being accepted as a qualified expert with his experience has been put on the record.
With the caveat that...
That he's not a licensed engineer.
Right. That's all, that's all I wanted to make sure.
With that...
All right, thank you. I'll refer to exhibit A4 as was presented by Mr. McClellan, and there was a question raised on the adequacy of the new intersection we're creating with this public street serving six dwellings. As was stated, the property frontage is approximately 100 feet. We've located the proposed roadway as far north or maximized the distance to the signalized intersection. Also took into consideration the operational characteristics of Cooks Bridge Road intersection. Based on the fact that, and let me consider Brewers Bridge as north-south and Cooks Bridge as east-west, just for my testimony, but someone eastbound on Cooks Bridge would be making a left turn at a low speed onto Brewers Bridge Road and not achieving the posted speed limit of 45 miles an hour that exists on Brewers Bridge Road. We also have westbound Cooks Bridge Road, and Cooks Bridge is 40 miles per hour in this, this section. Having to make a right turn onto Brewers Bridge, and the radius at that point is approximately 150 feet, but as they turn right onto Brewers Bridge, there are a traffic control devices, that being yield signs. Acknowledge them, they have to yield to a vehicle that is making a left turn off of Cooks Bridge Road. The geometric design, the traffic control devices and the like, provide for low speeds on a northbound direction. I have driven this intersection, and the right turn movement from Cooks Bridge through the Brewers Bridge, a comfortable speed is approximately 20 miles per hour. And when you review the ASH though, site distance requirements, at 20 miles per hour, 100, 115 feet of site distance is required. We have over 300 feet. But even if someone drove more aggressively and made that turn at 30 miles per hour, the safe stopping distance is 200 feet. And again, we have 300. So it's my expert opinion, based on the traffic control devices, the geometry of the intersection, and the placement of this proposed subdivision street, that it can operate safely and efficiently when the homes are, are constructed and fully occupied.
Does anyone have other questions for Mr. Kennel?
Your 300, sorry, your 300 feet is measured from where?
Is measured from the proposed street.
Yep.
From that location down towards Cooks Bridge Road, right where the vehicle is turning right onto Brewers Bridge, from Cooks Bridge. So we have 300 feet from where that laser pointer is up to the site access. And if you, if you look at the, I'll say it's the top exhibit on the right, and we may have to expand it, blow it up, but you can see from, that's generally from this, the proposed intersection, you can see clearly to the Cooks Bridge Road intersection and where those right turns movements would be, would be made.
And how about the queuing for the traffic light? How much issue is that gonna be?
I don't see it as an issue. That doesn't obstruct the sightlines, and the queuing would be in this, are you referring to the queens in the southbound direction on Brewers Bridge?
Correct.
Right. That is on the other side of the road. That would not affect the visibility.
Not a visibility, just access, or egress, sorry.
At times, if there's a queue there, then someone exiting from the public street would have to wait to the, to that queue clears. But I don't have, traffic counts to tell you how often that occurs. But that would be only during the peak periods, based on my experience of driving through this intersection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think Mr. Fleming might have covered this. This is Glenn Herring. But I just want to make sure that you leave enough room. So as people come into that intersection at the angle, a lot faster than you can believe. And is there enough space and sight opening so they can, people coming out of your street can make sure they can see enough without having to stick out into the road and take a look to the left or the right, basically to the left?
I, I understand your question, and as I said, a comfortable speed coming, making that right turn is approximately 20 miles an hour. I did drive aggressively, and it was, you know, at 30. And if someone comes around here at 30 miles per hour, the required stopping sight distance is 200 feet, as established by ASH though in Ocean County, and we have 300 feet. So taking that into consideration, it's my opinion that we have adequate distance, and it can operate safely and efficiently.
I mean, there'll be no vegetation or anything like that that might block...
Sight triangles will have to be clear of vegetation, correct. And also, just for the board's benefit, Brewers Bridge Road is under county jurisdiction, so this is subject to their review and approval as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, we have a question.
Would, have, yes, question would be, have you interacted with the Board of Education yet as to which direction the buses would come, southbound or northbound? Because it appears awkward and to me dangerous if the buses are stopping proximate to that entrance, particularly if you have no, no egress off of that road.
I have not had any conversations with the Board of Ed. Those issues are usually dealt with.
I understand that. But that's, where you're proposing that, that road, that's a really awkward intersection. I've been on it. And 20 miles is quite generous if you're thinking people are going that slow. And so I'm seeing a bus coming south, stopping, putting out their stop, you know, as appropriate, and children crossing that road with people banging to the right going up, not expecting at all a bus stop. And so I think that's worth considering.
Well, I've been advised, as far as Ocean County's concerns, based on a meeting on January 20th, 2021, this proposal has been approved. So they, the county is diligent in looking at all these matters as far as safety and the, the location of intersections. And again, it's also the responsibility of drivers to be cognizant and obeying the laws. So we've looked...
I understand. I'm just trying to get testimony from you professionally, your view on a bus stop in front and children crossing to go across that street with the potential intersection of cars going to the right at, unless you didn't do a study of the rate of speed, the average rate of speed, what's your testimony on whether or not that's safe or not?
Again, based on the operating speeds and what I've observed up there, in my opinion, it's safe. And it's also the responsibility of the bus drivers to have the proper signals on and of the motor in public to follow the yield signs and not drive recklessly.
Mr. Wall, are you okay?
No, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ernie Peters. Scott, would this unique circumstance lend itself to any advanced warning signage being suggested or required?
Yeah, this, again, I guess the geometry and being able to convey the proper message, I mean, it's something that we could discuss with the county as far as a warning sign on Cooks Bridge Road in advance of this intersection that there is a public street. It's, it's something that has to be evaluated in taking into consideration the other traffic control devices and the geometry we have here.
And I, I guess to follow up on Mr. Wall's comments or conversation, while I, I don't doubt the county looked at this, I think perhaps the town's comments or the planning board's comments should be transmitted to them. To the best of my knowledge, if you want to make a left out of the site, you'd have to cross a double yellow line, correct?
That's correct.
Is that normal on county highways?
Yes, it is.
Okay. How would you warn someone who's leaving this site to make a left that there, of someone speeding around the corner?
Well, I guess the positive thing with this is it's, it's, it's a residential development. It's, drivers are going to be using that intersection on a regular basis or coming out of this subdivision. So obviously, there's a familiarity rather than being a transient type use where they're unfamiliar. So again, it's, it's going to be the same people using this on a regular basis and are aware and just have to be, you know, a heightened approach as they come to the intersection to take that into consideration.
Would there be any purpose served by providing additional widening or a D cell lane heading northbound on Brewers' Bridge to get into the site, given the limited frontage?
Given the limited frontage and given the distance, I mean, I, I don't see where there'll be a material benefit with that. If you had something of a longer frontage, I mean, we only have beyond the new street approximately 50 feet, 60 feet to provide, you know, additional shoulder area.
I appreciate your, your testimony. I, I would recommend to the board and to the applicant that the safety issues raised by the board members at least be transmitted to the county planning board so that they understand that, you know, we took a little harder look at this, and we, we know a little better about our own neighborhood, and we'd like to, at a minimum, see at least some advanced warning or some pavement striping, if that's appropriate, to enhance the, the safety for people exiting the site.
To that end, should the board approve this application, the applicant would have no objection to writing a letter to the county to, to request any additional signage in the, on the island area or anywhere else the county deems appropriate.
Thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Kennel.
Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on what Ernie said. Widening of the road there might help to get the cars off of the road, or at least the school buses. Because if you're giving me 300 feet from the actual intersection of Cooks Bridge and Brewers' Bridge, and you have a bus slowing down for a stop, you've cut that down to at least 200. You got a 40-foot bus slowing down to for a stop, he's not 300 feet away. So if he has a place to get off the road, or the cars have a place to get off the road, that could be a wise choice. You have 100 feet, some of us taken up by road, but that still gives you 60 feet to get a car off the road. It might be a consideration. You already have a variance and asked for, for the basin lot, and that's all you're taking it away from.
Again, I guess that goes along with our letter, our request to the county to review in more detail and make that suggestion to them as well. Again, we're sub, we're still subject to the Ocean County approval on the design along our frontage.
Mr. Grinnon, can we make that a stipulation, even though the county has jurisdiction?
We can make, what the board can do is you can make it a stipulation that they might take, ask the county to take formal action. And if the county doesn't do that, then it's ultimately up to the county. But as opposed to just a letter sitting out there, can ta, take a more affirmative approach. I see Mr. Pfeffer saying basically okay to that. And I am certain, just to follow up on that as well, you know, and we can work on a resolution should the board act favorably. We could try that resolution as well to empower our own professionals to have that conversation, advocate these conditions and circumstances for the board as well.
Thank you.
So we're on the same team on that?
Yes, we, we have no problem. And I just also just want to point out that, that house on lot 17, currently buses do stop, which is closer to, to the intersection. I drive the road almost every day, if not multiple times a day. So buses are there already, so people are aware of it. But we have no problem taking the extra step back to the county.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Questions? Traffic? No? Do you have any other witnesses?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. So, Mr. Pfeffer, you didn't circle back?
Yeah, we wanted to get the traffic testimony on. I'll call Mr. McFarland. I know additional witnesses, but we'll call Mr. McFarland back.
Your discussion...
Yes, yes, we have.
And the public should also be then informed, so that if they have any input, then the board can weigh that.
So I think one question, I'll just ask the board. I know we've had multiple applications back and forth dealing with the basin and association versus no association. I, I think it, it's a linked conversation here. Again, if, if we, if the board feels that the basin should be in association, I think that links into either way, these other shared, called mini basins, verse on the individual lots, because it, either way, if they're on the individual lots, we will need, what was called before as der restrictions, I'll call them easements, to access and, and to, to maintain. Versus if they're shared, either way, we need, we will need that. The association, as you indicated, is one way of, of maintaining it for the township. So it's kind of one question to the board. If you give us indication of what you would like to see, we're good, basically, either way. I just want to...
My presence in this, for the individual basins in between the houses, my feeling is it should be in an HOA. It's to be worked out between the people there. I don't think the government intrusion and welcome to my lawn, and we're going to do this, or we're going to recommend we plant that. Let them sort it out. Let them clean out the balls and the bicycles. As far as the major basin, I think they can go either way. Typically, they've gone with the town, and I wouldn't object to that. While I do have your attention, what I would suggest is 20 or 30 feet of sidewalk up near the basin, just so much that you can have an area of refuge for the, the children that are going to be waiting for the bus. If the, if the bus is going to pick them up there, a simple eight-by-10 concrete pad, throw a bench on it or whatever, or just a pad, someplace for them to stand that they're out of the way for folks going in and out.
We're showing, I'm sorry, on that, we're showing sidewalk along the whole, in the front of the basin, all up on the street.
I'm talking the other side, the, the far side where you're exempt from it, the nor, playing north side, up against the existing properties.
Could you go to A2? I think probably...
The, the farm property, the accessory use property?
Can you put A2 up, please?
Real, real simple, Graham. When, when you're leaving that development, up at the right corner where the stop sign is?
I think, I'll jump in. I, I think you're asking for us to have some sidewalk on this north side?
Just, just a little bit, or...
That's fine.
An area of refuge that the kids can stand on...
That's fine.
That, not the road, so that you don't have somebody causing a problem.
And just so the board understands, we do have sidewalk posed along our frontage on Brewers' Bridge here in front of the basin, on the south side of the street, all the way around the cul-de-sac. And Mr. Riker, I believe you're asking for, let's call it, you know, 30 feet of sidewalk at this north.
Just, just whatever works, has to be like an area of refuge.
That's, that's fine.
Whatever, whatever it is, it doesn't need to be overly complicated. But that would be my impression on how to, one, deal with those individual basins. I, I think it's an overreach for the government to get in the middle of that one there. I wouldn't want it. Thanks. But it's a great idea.
Mr. Riker, I agree on both your points, the HOA and that little pad, the bus stop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug Clay, I would agree with Mr. Riker as far as the small individual basins. Let an HOA, you know, handle the, the maintenance. As long as the HOA documents are clear, that, you know, I would assume that the homeowner's association with the homeowner will be responsible for replacing any vegetation that's, that dies in these bioreptile basin, and also be limited, that they can't do any regrading, you know, of these, of these basins. But I, I would agree, let's keep government out of the private homeowners and, but then, you know, and the, and the town will also have a point person to go to if there's a problem with those individual basins.
Good point, Mr. Clay. Thank you. I see you nodding your head, Mr. Pfeffer.
We're fully in agreement.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, again, through the chair, just from my own clarity, does it then naturally follow that the HOA will take care of the larger basin as well? Has that been your point?
We still prefer the township to maintain the large one, but it, we're open for discussion.
I believe we've heard some commentary on both sides. So ultimately, it's really up to the board.
I would agree as far as the larger basin. I think the town is much more well-equipped with their, with their equipment to maintain a basin of, of that size and character. Small willing areas, I think that's easily to be maintained by the property.
Okay, Mr. Poro, did you have a comment?
I do. Jeff Poro. One quick point on the individual basins. Do they hold any water? Are they meant to not?
No, they will, they will not hold any water permanently, only during a very short period of time during a storm event.
And what gets planted in those basins?
There's a, there's a plan which identifies all the plantings that are proposed. They have to be water-tolerant species. There's a, that comes out of the DEP Stormwater BMP manual. So that, that's been studied, and they're identified, they're, they're indicated on the plan.
Okay. And then getting back to Mr. Riker's point with the sidewalk on the north side, does that not now shift the road a little bit to make room for that sidewalk?
No, it does not. The, the sidewalk would be contained within the right-of-way, that strip between, between the curb and the property line is where the sidewalk would fall. So it does not alter our proposed design or location of the right-of-way.
But there's still going to be a strip of land, and it has to be maintained?
Correct. I testified before, tried to explain that on this north side, the, the right-of-way is 50 feet wide. So this proposed curb will be set in 10, this proposed curb will be set in 10 feet from the property line. So technically, there will be a strip of land that will be 10 feet wide between the curb and between the proposed or, or the existing property line. And now, Mr. Riker has suggested putting, you know, plus or minus 30 feet of sidewalk at the intersection to give, you know, kids who may be waiting for a school bus a little extra space, just to safely stand outside of the travel, travel way.
And we're thinking the right-of-way gets maintained by the township?
The right-of-way is dedicated to the town and technically supposed to be maintained by the, by the township.
Thank you.
Yes?
Yes, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Chairman?
I, Michelle Campbell. The, the roadway that goes into the community, I think then the homeowners' association would be maintaining that area, that, where the sidewalk is, and there'll be vegetation. So somebody's going to have to mow it or...
No, this is a proposed public right-of-way for dedication to the municipality. The township would be responsible for maintenance of the right-of-way.
Which, then it would make sense with the township maintaining the basin and that, the beginning of that roadway. So when it comes to mowing or cleaning out, that would be the township's property, at first, however many feet of that roadway before you get to a home?
May I, Mr. Chairman, I think, Dr. Campbell, the, the homeowners' association is not like part of a planned unit development or anything. It's a very limited scope. So the applicant in this particular circumstances, which is the norm, would be dedicating Title 39 rights to the municipality for traffic control and stuff.
Mr. Wall, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you very much. Two quick items. One, as a general administrative recommendation, the township is not particularly interested in maintaining any additional detention, retention, or other related basins than otherwise required by law. That footprint is better, to the point of some other board members, very much better off with a homeowners' association and not further burdened on the general taxpayers via, you know, the, these would be the Department of Public Works, just as a matter of general policy. The second item, I was just looking at the cul-de-sac. If a bus pulled into the cul-de-sac, can a bus or a fire truck, and maybe you can, I'm just looking at the, the visual, can it, can it turn around in that cul-de-sac with one turn, or does it have to K-turn? Because if it doesn't, then a bus can pull in, into that location safely, and the bus stop can be inside this small development. But, so that question and extended to fire apparatus, can, can those apparatus fit in that cul-de-sac? And if not, can the cul-de-sac perhaps drop that other lot, and widen that cul-de-sack, and maximize that space, and you can put additional drainage over there instead of an additional home?
As far as the street, the street is RSI is compliant, which is what is required by law. As far as the basin, again, the statute, the ordinance provides that we can either pay into the township, which is not a burden on to the taxpayer. There's a calculation that's in the, it's in the ordinance, and we, we make a payment, or there's an HOA. So again, we're, we're, either way, we're going to be compliant.
All right. So back to the question, can a bus make it around the cul-de-sac, or does it have to K-turn? And similar with fire apparatus? Regardless of RSI, I'm just asking a technical question.
Yeah, consistent with RSI's criteria of a 40-foot radius, that is not large enough for a bus to make a turn, you know, without a K-turn. So...
Thank you.
So it would have to make a K-turn in that cul-de-sac.
And a fire apparatus as well, I assume, right?
If they cannot, if they cannot maneuver a 40-foot radius, they would have to make, you know, a three-point turn.
Thank you.
Because it's so small yet. Because we can just pull in and back out. I just have another question.
Mr. Wall, anything else?
No, sir, thank you very much.
You said there's a right-of-way that the township has to maintain on the north side of the street, correct? That also would mean that the township would be responsible for clearing the snow on the sidewalk that we're putting there? Yes? There's so many of them out there, that's what we do, you K-turn it. And some of them, we actually have to use driveways. We have to actually put the tail of the driveway over it to get it to make it. It is what it is. But with six houses, you know what a real problem? Same. Other than that, you go in, you put the driveway needs to be where we're expecting it out.
Mr. Chairman, I can say that for sure the township is not responsible to clear the sidewalk. However, we would agree that the HOA that was created, it'll be also included in, in the documents. It's their, it's their responsibility to maintain that sidewalk.
Thank you. Hold on, which sidewalk?
The sidewalk that we were just talking about, the, the north side of that little 30-foot strip. Right. So maybe we won't make it 30 feet anymore, but we'll make it an area that's, that's acceptable to, to the, to the board professionals for an area of refuge.
And on the same note, how about the sidewalk along the basin?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All good points. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, at this time, let's open this up to public comment. I see we have, we've had one person with their hand up since this application started. And that is Lily.
The public.
Oh, here we go, can you hear me now? I think I was muted.
Do you mind turning your camera on, please?
Yeah, sure. Hold on. I'm new to Zoom, I usually use Google Meets. Okay, here I am. Hi, how are you? I am the property owner of Lot 21 with the horse farm.
Ma'am, hold on one second, please, we have to.
Sure, no problem.
Truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Lillian Levine, L-E-V-I-N-A. And I am at 225 Brewers Bridge Road in Jackson, New Jersey.
Okay, Ms. Levine.
Hi, I am the owner of Lot 21 with the horse farm right next door. So my concerns are the accessory structure that we were all mentioning, you were mentioning before, is my horse barn where I have about four horses in every night. And right next to that is a paddock where they get turned out to. And next to that is the riding ring that I ride in frequently. And I also have children, you know, younger people coming and ride over here as well. You know, friends and things like that. But my concern is if the road is right along there, now we have horses right next to the road. I want to know how far from my property line is that road going to be? And is there a fence going up or some type of buffer zone? So that, you know, cars and buses and whatever is not whizzing right by my horse farm. I've been here 18 years with a lot of, you know, seclusion and privacy and it's been kind of quiet. And so my concern is for the safety of myself and anybody riding and my horses, of course. So is there any type of fence or buffer zone going up, bushes?
Understood, and I see the attorney for the applicant is raising his hand to respond to you. Mr. Fetter.
I heard your instructions early on. Yes, the applicant has, first, it's, the road is 10 feet from the property line. The applicant has no objection to installing a white vinyl fence. We would just ask, it would be six foot, we would ask the board for a variance to install that fence, if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Unless, we think the fence will be the best, the best buffer.
Right, and then as you said, it wouldn't be right in front of the front yard of the homes, the homeowners. So, okay, I just wanted to know that, to know that, you know, I mean, like I said, it's, the barn is right there. So if the road was right there, it's not really, it's a safety issue. So. Okay, that, that was the only question I had, so thank you very much.
Mr. Puporo, are you okay with that? Fence being installed at that site?
I do. Is it going to be the entire length of the roadway or just in front of the, this property?
We would ask for the variance on both Lot 19 and 21, so it's consistent. Again, we would ask if it would be a six-foot, a six-foot fence, so we would need that variance.
And we'll go right to the street or the road, I'm sure 30 feet back, perhaps?
30 feet, 30 feet back, 30 feet from the property line.
Up, up to the refuge area.
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, okay, Ms. Levine, I'm sure you, you heard that. Does anyone else from the public care to comment regarding this application? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one. We have a motion to close public comment, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anybody have any final thoughts? Ms. Campbell?
I think that would look very nice and I think it would, would be a nice way to, when you're driving into that community, that fence on the left will be quite nice. That homeowners association, however, will also be responsible for that fence and maintaining it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just, I guess, one final point, I guess we, I don't think we answered yet finally definitively if that front basin would be part of the HOA or, or township owned. I think at this point, the HOA has been expanded and it, it's covering some other items not previously discussed. And I think it would just be easier at this point to maintain the basin in an HOA along with the other items we previously had agreed to. Again, unless the board has a difference of opinion. No problem.
Just one quick point with those basins. Are we going to put them onto one property each or straddle the property lines? Because we're dealing with fences possibly in the future.
I think we're going to shift them, I think, we were going to shift them onto each individual property. And then the HOA docs will cover through a blanket easement that each of them can be maintained by the association.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a brief question. For, for Jeff, for Jeff Puporo. Mr. Puporo, are you aware of any other six-foot lengths of solid white fencing from your experience in a development, given a variance?
There is a subdivision on Hawkins Road that does have probably looks like 500 or 600 linear feet of white vinyl fence before you actually drive into the subdivision. That's the really only one, only one I can think of offhand. Thank you.
I was just going to move. Move to accept.
Okay, any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan? Mr. Dolan?
Mr. Dolan, can you hear me? We're having a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. The answer is, with the agreements that we've discussed and are things that we are requiring, yes.
Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's, before we take a five-minute break, this next application block 13401, lots 2.02, 4.01, 15, 16, 24, and 26, Luxor Drive. I'm going to have to refuse myself. So Mr. Herring will be running the meeting. So let's take a five-minute break.
It is, it's on. Okay, our next order business is block 13401, lots 2.02, 4.01, 15, 16, 24, and 26, Luxor Drive, 1426 LLC. Mr. Clay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application for preliminary major subdivision. The applicant proposes to establish 15 residential building lots, two, and two open space slash stormwater management lots on the subject property. He is utilizing the cluster provisions of the R3 zoning district. There are a number of lots involved, all existing, some have been developed and that are going to be incorporated into the subdivision. Initially, there was a issue of jurisdiction, a question of density came up. The applicant had gone to the zoning board and got an interpretation that basically puts the application back to the, to the planning board. But just maybe some initial testimony from the applicant as far as the specifics of the interpretation and what the, what the zoning board found was required to keep the application, the application here. There is a number of variance relief requests that are required and the applicant should provide supportive testimony in conjunction with, with each of them. The, is subject to the residential site improvement standards. Sidewalk is provided on, on one side of the proposed roadway. Some testimony from the applicant in support of that waiver request. The application is impacted by the conservation overlay zone and the applicant has provided a valid or occurrence certificate of filing, which confirms the locate, I'm sorry, a letter of interpretation, which clarifies the wetlands areas indicated as well as the buffers. The applicant has also submitted an environmental impact statement. So just the testimony from the applicant is regarding the findings of that report, as well as any comments that have been received from the, the environmental commission. The road, proposed roadway grade is compliant with RSIS standards. Stormwater management facilities are in, are proposed for the roadway discharging to a stormwater management basin, which is the own to maintain by, by an HOA. The proposal does include street lighting, some testimony from the applicant regarding compliance with the, the street lighting standards. It appears some additional streetlights are, are required. Testimony from the applicant regarding proposed landscaping and screening of the basin. Finally, some testimony from the applicant regarding existing accessory structures. We just want to make sure that there's no two-family or two, well, or two, two families established on a single lot. There is a number of accessory structures and we just want to make sure there's no residentials that are going to be affected or need some consideration. That's all at this time.
Mr. Chairman, our office has a report, October 29th, 2020. The properties in both the R1 and the R3 zones. Just to make it interesting and a little more fun, the applicant came in and put lots in both zones. And for that reason, they needed to go to the zoning board of adjustment for an interpretation as it relates to the density requirements for each of the zones and the lot bulk requirements for each of the lots. So I'd asked the applicant's team to, as Mr. Clay had indicated, put some detailed testimony on the record that indicates what zone is going to, in theory, be governed by which lots, by which bulk standards. So it's clear when it's time for final subdivision approval, what bulk standards go on the final map and ultimately get reviewed by Mr. Puporo when someone comes in for building permit. Without repeating any of Mr. Clay's comments, the only other one I have is we want some test, we'd like to hear some testimony about who's going to be responsible for the maintenance of the landscaping within both, both the basin lots and the open space. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, turn on behalf of the applicant. Somewhat similar to the previous application with a few minor differences. As both the professionals have indicated, this application came in sometime, as you heard Mr. Peters' letters, from October of 2020. In that letter, in that report, it raised an issue regarding split zone and which, which zone do you look to for the density? Based upon that, we took a step back and, and made an application to the zoning board for an interpretation. At that hearing, it was, it was a very good hearing, we were able to, to to answer some of the issues and we were able to slide over. One of the lot, one of the houses straddled the line, was in both the zones. So there was a, and, and we'll give some more testimony on it, but the basic result was you look to where the house is actually situated. So if the house is in R1, it goes to the R1 density. If it's in the R3, it goes to the R3 density. And by shifting one of the, the houses, we were able to resolve that issue. I think from, from the onset also on this application, based upon what we just spoke about in the last one, we're going to indicate there'll be an HOA that will maintain the basin and the open space lots. I believe that that's just an easier suggestion at this point. If I can swear in Mr. Hopkins and we can go from there.
I swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board, excuse me, represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and then, and your affiliation? And then through the chair, they'll vordere you slightly regarding your credentials.
Sure, Walter Hopkins, H-O-P-K-I-N. Business address, 257 Monmouth Road, Oakhurst, New Jersey. The owner of WJH Engineering and these plans were prepared under my supervision. I have had the opportunity to testify before both this board and the zoning board. Been qualified as an expert. I have a professional engineer's license in the states of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a licensed certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I maybe just give some overview of the application, including?
Sure, what I, what I have handed, I believe to most, if not all, the board members. And if I, if I didn't hand one out, I apologize, I'm, I'm short at this point. But a color-rendered version of the site was, I believe, provided to the, the board in anticipation of tonight's meeting. So I will be referring to that if that can be put up. Yes, it is a color-rendered version of the site plan that was prepared by our office, last revised March 18th, 2021. The lot is a 39.26 acre combination of parcels. It's kind of in the northeast intersection of Green Valley and Brewers Bridge Road, although none of the, the properties are actually at that intersection. It's known as lots 2.02, 4.01, 15, 16, 24, and 26. It's known as lots 2.02, 4.01, 15, 16, 24, and 26, and Block 13401. It's a very irregularly shaped lot, kind of has tentacles that reach out to both Brewers Bridge, to Green Valley, and it also does have frontage on Glen Road. It's surrounded by similar, single-family residential homes in the area. There are currently six lots that comprise of this application with six homes. So, each lot has a home on it. They all front on existing streets. They are all served by public, excuse me, by well and septic and will continue to do so. Five of those lots, five of those homes will remain on those lots and will continue to front on both Glen, Brewers Bridge, and Green Valley. One of the homes that fronts on Green Valley will be demolished and make way for the cul-de-sac, which will access the site. As you can see, there's actually a large cleared area towards the rear of the property and we utilize that cleared area to minimize the amount of tree disturbance and that's where the majority of the homes will go. Two of the homes, existing homes, will continue to be on Brewers Bridge Road, three on Green Valley, and one on Glen. There are wetlands and repairing buffers that have been delineated and accepted by DEP. There's a minor amount of buffer averaging that's being proposed. We would make an application to DEP upon approval by this board and condition the approval upon that being obtained. There is a stream that runs through the property that the detention basin and an existing outfall from Green Valley Road discharges to. Stormwater will continue in the same general direction. And as Mr. Peters indicated, we did go to the zoning board. It sounds complicated, but I believe the density has been settled that there are no density variances required. And what your ordinance, as I'm sure you're aware, we're in both the R3 and the R1 zone and we're utilizing the cluster provision of your R3 zone, which then relies upon the R1 zone for its bulk standards. So, this all boils down to the bulk standards for each lot will conform with your R1 zone. If that's not clear for your professionals on our zoning table, we certainly clarify that as any condition of approval. So, just to reiterate, the density has been deemed appropriate for the use and that the R1 zoning criteria will be used on all lots. There'll be nine new homes on the cul-de-sac. Those are on lots average, ranging from just over one acre to two and a half acres. There were two open space stormwater management lots that were proposed in preparation of the meeting and consultation with your professionals. It seems that it would make more sense to add those lots to the adjacent residential lots, create an easement, and make that easement to the benefit of the township and/or the homeowners association. The homeowners association will be responsible for maintenance of those facilities. What that does is it does eliminate several, if not all, of the variances that I'll get into a little bit later. The cul-de-sac, as it was proposed, is 28 feet wide. Just talked to Mr. Clea before the meeting and it's the township's preference to go with a 30-foot-wide cartway width, which we would revise and update any stormwater management calculations accordingly. We do have sidewalk along one of the sides of the road, but it does extend all the way around the cul-de-sac and to all lots. The only place it wouldn't be would be the area that runs along the roadway where there are no proposed lots. We are proposing streetlights. I believe Mr. Clea's office identified a deficiency and we would add lights as appropriate and submit calculations in a point-by-point to his office as any condition of approval. There is a rain garden, a bioretention basin, which I believe you heard testimony in the last application. It is not between lots, it's in its own area and it's alongside the roadway. It is outside of the right-of-way, so again, it would be maintained by homeowners association. And this is a new, actually not a new, but a newly preferred method of treating stormwater prior to discharge. So, a majority of this water will go in there. There's a specific planting criteria, which helps to enhance the water quality before it goes to the other detention basin, which is along Green Valley Road, an infiltration basin, and then it discharges and will be connected to an existing stormwater pipe, which discharges to the stream. The homes will be serviced by well and septic. I believe there was a comment in Mr. Peters' letter regarding recreation. We do not have any specific recreation proposed for this. It's been our experience that with one-acre lots, a tot lot really doesn't function well, especially with nine homes. So, what we would ask the board to accept, but are certainly open to any suggestions, is that simply with one-acre lots, the individual homeowners will have their own jungle gyms as they feel is appropriate. I have taken a look at the site distance and expect it to be acceptable. The traffic impact of eight additional homes, remember, we're taking one of the homes off of Green Valley off, in my opinion, would be insignificant. I think building coverage and setbacks would all comply. We have, it's been a while since I've done a residential subdivision in Jackson, but learning from the last application, we have provided architectures. I think there's been a bit of a coordination between those and ours. We show 50 by 40 boxes. I believe what was submitted is a little bit more specific. Those are five-bedroom homes. I don't know that those are necessarily the ones that will be built here, but it's, they're ones that the builder has built in the past. So, they're five-bedroom homes with basements. RSIS would require three parking spaces. We can accommodate four on each individual lot, including one in the garage. We will update our plans to show those footprints.
Mr. Chairman? If I may apologize, just to make, and this might be my mix-up. So, you're talking about four plus at least one in a garage, or?
Four total.
Four total.
Correct. At a minimum.
Say again?
At a minimum, at least four.
Three plus one, okay, thank you.
Whereas RSIS requires three, four, five.
Are these homes to be custom or are they all going to be basically the same? You don't know at this point in time.
We don't know, I mean, most probably that this, most probably. This might be tract building. I don't foresee this, these being sold off individually. It's a little bit larger of a development, but it's not, it has not been finalized.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up on that?
Sure.
And this may be, we're going to take advantage of your expert. At what point, in your opinion, does a development become large enough where there should be some cohesiveness to the three, four, five type of model homes? In your opinion, if you know? Oh, okay.
And also just one other comment. The plans that were submitted, again, are not final, but we were trying to give the board some understanding of what we believe this development will probably look like.
I have reviewed your professionals' letters. Any technical comments, we will comply with. I would just ask if the board has any questions for me in my presentation or if there's anything that I haven't addressed in your professionals' comments that they'd like me to address specifically, I'd be more than happy to.
Anybody on the board, college?
Michelle Campbell, again, as in the last application, a, an appropriate spot for children to be standing for bus pickup? Is there an available area there? You know, you've got quite a bit of property there, so. And that's a little walk down to Green Valley, but I've seen the buses go up and down there and I don't want the kids in the road.
I would suggest, I don't know what the Board of Education's preference would be, but I did live in Jackson for 18 years at the end of a cul-de-sac and they did, they did come down the cul-de-sac. So, I would suggest that the kids would congregate in the cul-de-sac. Seems the safest place for them to be.
And how, how about the turning radius in that cul-de-sac?
I saw that question coming, too.
Bet you did.
We, I didn't, I didn't have the opportunity to put a turning radius on it. It is RSIS compliant. I don't know that it can circulate without a K-turn, but it certainly can within a K-turn.
I just don't see the Board of Ed sending buses down. So, you know, there, we're getting quite a number of these six, eight, 10, 12-home cul-de-sacs. The bus route's going to be long, long. So, I foresee them walking up to the corner and there needs to be a safe place for them to get on and off a bus there.
Well, we can certainly accommodate that. There's a, there's a part of that open space lot that runs along the road. There's ample area for us to add that.
That would be the spot.
Okay.
And, you know, and even if the Board of Ed does send down something to the cul-de-sac, which I'm not sure is going to happen, it'll be a place for them to get off the bus, too.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else on the board?
Yeah, just one comment after Mr. Campbell's. You know, it wouldn't kill anybody to put one less house in and make that cul-de-sac a little bigger and a little safer. So, maybe that should get some thought.
I, I did. We usually just respond to questions, so that sounded like a statement.
Well, it's a question. Let's turn it into the form of a question, which is what can you do to make the bulb of the cul-de-sac larger to avoid variances, but to negate the necessity of this length of Luxor Drive to having to do a K-turn? If anything?
So, I'm sure you're aware, this is RSIS compliant.
I, we understand. That's not, but you're a professional, at least try.
I am, and that's my answer as a professional.
So, there's nothing you can do?
I didn't say that. I said my answer is that it's RSIS compliant. We can look at it, we can look at it as a condition of approval, but it is RSIS compliant. No, no, it's not a non-answer.
If there's anything you can do to make that bigger, so the bus could turn around, fire engines, et cetera, trash collection, people down there, snow plowing, et cetera.
We have, we have an area to expand the paved radius within the right-of-way and we'd certainly do that as a condition of approval.
And what may assist is this is preliminary, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So, it makes, it makes that process to review it a little bit easier for both the board and the applicant. So, on that note, I guess we should, the board should appreciate the fact that they're not overreaching and they are, in fact, asking simply for preliminary approval for these reasons.
Mr. Riker? Next?
Given the length of this cul-de-sac, that's really the street, in my opinion, I think you should expand the loop, one for the fire apparatus. Being a former firefighter, I would not want to back down what looks to me like greater than an eighth of a mile with a truck. I'd want to turn that thing around. And then, you know, the other thing is you're captured. You get down there, you're stuck. And it becomes a problem getting out when you have a house party that's a fire and six or eight trucks come. It becomes a cluster. So, anything you can do, I don't want to impose, you know, taking a lot from you or suggesting that you lose a lot, but I think it's in everyone's best interest, you know, you make that as big as you can.
I agree, and I'm sorry if I misstated. The apparatus can turn around in the cul-de-sac, it would just be a K-turn. I wouldn't suggest that they would back down that entire length.
I'm suggesting you make the bulb big enough that you don't have to turn around.
Yes, sir.
I'll be honest with you, having driven a fire truck for 10, 11 years, they don't turn around real easy. They're pathetic, to be honest with you. They're meant to go in a straight line and fast. They're too heavy to turn around and I think, I think you can do something. Again, I don't want to pressure you into losing a lot as much as I like to argue about it, but I think there's a means or a way to it. It appears to me that you're nine-tenths of the way through everything that each other application went through and it's just this last little point here that is going to make, you know, things a lot better. Thank you.
Anyone else?
See, no one else like to open it up to the public?
Do you have any? You have any other, are you done now with your affirmative testimony?
Through the chair, I would, I do have testimony on waivers and variances at whatever time the chair would like me to address those.
We'll do that now.
Okay.
We'll hold up the public second. Short period of time, sorry.
So, there's a number of design waivers and I think we've eliminated some, if not all, of the variances. So, design waivers, sidewalk along the existing roads. We didn't show sidewalk along the existing roads because those homes exist, but we understand that's kind of a non-negotiable issue here. So, we can either install those sidewalks or contribute to the sidewalk fund, whatever the board feels appropriate, or we could revisit that between preliminary and final, but whatever the township's ordinance is, we would comply with.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, through the chair on that point, since this, again, taking advantage of your process, we would ask that you consult with the township engineer so that the board knows at final what the determination is.
Okay, will do. Your ordinance requires a six-foot shade tree and utility easement. That's been identified as your professionals is deficient on our plans. We will revise that, we would not want to request a waiver from that. And then, recreation, that's something that was identified in Mr. Peters' letter and I believe I briefly spoke about that. There are a number of variances that have been identified and I think we've been able to knock most of them out. There are several existing variances for the existing lots on Brewers Bridge Road. Lot 24.01, your ordinance requires 150-foot lot width, 125 exists. Those homes have been there for a while, just in existing condition that there's nothing that we can do to rectify the lot. Correct, correct, and nothing is being made worse by this application. Lot 26.01, which is the other lot on Brewers Bridge, there's a lot with requirement, again, of 150, 100 feet exists today. There's a side yard setback requirement of 20 or 16.4 feet exists today. Again, those are existing conditions. Nothing that has anything to do with this application is affecting that, making it better or worse. There's a shed towards the rear of the property that is on the property line. Your ordinance requires 15 feet. We would move that shed or remove it. I'll have to consult with the property owner, but we will bring that into compliance. There is a, kind of a 25-foot-wide lot that runs along the property line where there are no homes. That's the lot that would be owned by the homeowners association. I believe if we add that to Lot 24.02, which is the last residential lot, we could at least eliminate the lot area variance that was identified by your professionals. Lot width becomes a little bit more complicated in interpretation, so just to err on the side of caution, I guess we would request a lot width variance because we have a long, slender proposed lot. Lot frontage, your ordinance requires 125 feet, where this would only be 25. However, that's been addressed by annexing that onto Lot 24.02. So, just to summarize, the only, the only variance that I think were left there and it's still questionable would be lot width. And that's just due to the unique size and shape of that lot. There were actually number two variances on the residential lot that was going to remain on Green Valley Road. That's adjacent to our infiltration basin. However, in discussing with your professionals, it seems to make more sense just to add both of those lots together, put the infiltration basin into an easement to the benefit of the homeowners association and the township if they would want any access to it. And that would eliminate both a lot width and lot frontage variance. So, kind of went through a lot there, but what we're left with is a few variances for existing homes that there's nothing that we're doing to make worse or can't make them better. existing homes that there's nothing that we're doing to make worse or can't make them better. And it looks like we may have a lot variance width for a lot width for the rain garden lot, which is, which is part of stormwater management. I believe these existing variances can be granted as C1s as they exist, and compliance would create undue hardship and are due to existing conditions, can't be remedied. I think positive would be that it allows those existing lots to remain and those homeowners to be able to maintain, enjoy those homes. And negative as they exist and the neighborhood has kind of adopted to the configuration, I don't believe there's any negative impact with those. With the proposed variance for lot width, I believe it can be granted as a C2. Because it is a rain garden, a bioretention basin, I think the positive criteria there is that you do get increased water quality, and it does fit the shape of that proposed basin. The negative, because it'll be annexed to the other lot, I don't believe there's any negative impact in granting that variance. It's my, my professional opinion as a professional planner, these variances can be granted because the benefits of granting these outweigh any detriment, and they can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It would not substantially impair the intent or the purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Mr. Clay, Mr. Peters, your comments, any thoughts on the variances?
Hi, Ernie Peters. I don't take any exception to Mr. Hopkins' testimony. I think the accommodations they made for the open space and stormwater management lots is proper, and quite frankly, makes it easier for the municipality to deal with once the thing's built and turned over.
Homeowners Association is gonna deal with the stormwaters.
Yes, sir.
It's not beat it over to the town?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just a question.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes, I'm just curious. What is the plan for the other lots that have brought this development, 2.05 up to 2.11? Is there future plans for that? 05 up to 2.11.
So those are, those are part of this application and have homes on them?
Okay, the map doesn't quite show that, but.
Okay.
There's existing homes on them.
Those are proposed homes. 2.05 through 2.11 are homes that are, or lots that will have homes proposed on them. It's part of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Michelle Campbell. I'm always in favor of sidewalks for sake of safety instead of, I love the township, and I'm happy to have them get the money, but I think with an area like this, you're gonna have a lot of children, so let's put sidewalks in there, please.
Okay.
I have two further questions. Adding the property on to lot 24.02 is gonna take responsibility.
Adding that strip to 24.02? Yes. So it would, it would add that lot to 24.02, but we would put it in an easement. That would be the responsibility of the Homeowners Association, so it's kind of the best of both worlds. Yes. The back, the backs of those lots were added to those two lots. That's correct. Yes.
Real quickly, none of these accessory structures has an apartment in it, does it?
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now I'd like to open it up to public. Anybody from the public, raise your hand. We have one raising their hand whose title is resident, which, nice. Tony, can you let them on?
Hello, hello, sir. Can you unmute yourself?
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, through the chairman, if you virtually raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to give before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
William Legotti, L-E-G-O-T-T-E, 736 Green Valley Road, Jackson, New Jersey. And I'm on, I'm the resident on lot 14. So looking at your photo, I am to the left of what looks like your new swimming pool. The basin. So to the right of me, that's the old Duceo Farm where the easement is, where it looks like the storm basin's going to be. How much distance is going to be between my property line at 736 on lot 14 and that storm basin?
Approximately 40 feet to the property line and looks like 150 feet to your home.
Okay.
And then how far, what's happening with that?
And now, the house that's on the property to my right, I don't, I can't see the lot number on your photo, it's too small. Again, it's the old Duceo Farm. What's happening to that structure?
The one with the circular driveway?
No, that's.
No, the one with, the one attached to the easement to the right of my lot 14.
That sits, that sits behind you.
Yes.
That will remain.
Okay, so, all right. My next question is, what's happening to the, the property and the house directly to my left to the right of your new roadway?
That will remain as well.
Okay.
And they were talking about the sheds.
Yeah, what is the delineation of that red property line that is also on my property line?
That's actually the zone boundary. It's not a property line. It's the distinction between the township's R3 zone and the R1 zone. You're in the, you're the last property in the R1 zone.
Right. And then knowing the property pretty well, I'm gonna be here 19 years in July, it looks to me like those new houses you're building fall right in the old Duceo, literally the Duceo Farm, that long strip, it almost looks like a landing strip for an airplane. If you look at the aerial without your houses on it, is that pretty much where you're gonna be building those houses, on that old strip of farmland?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then to the right of that, which was the old Rugaber property, that's all wooded, and there's a, there's a chain link fence there. Is that wooded lot remaining?
The majority of it is yes.
Right, because then when you go to the right of that is the stream you're talking about.
Correct.
Yeah.
So no impact to our property?
And then that heads off to the, that heads off to the, the Black Oak and the Glen cul-de-sac.
Correct.
That's all not, nothing's coming down.
Correct.
Okay, I'm here with my wife. Any other questions?
They were talking about sheds and stuff. I don't, I'm not moving my shed.
I mean, if you look at, if you look at the point of my property on lot 14, it comes to almost a point along that red boundary that you have. You can see my pool.
Yes.
I have a shed, I have a shed back there. That's not gonna be affected, correct? Lot 14.
The sheds we were talking about were the ones on Brewers Bridge Road. We wouldn't, wouldn't go onto your property, no.
Okay, and when you first opened, I'm almost done, I'm sorry. When you first opened, you said there was gonna be 15 lots and two something else. I missed what the something else was.
The open space or detention basin lots, and what we've come to the conclusion tonight is we're, rather than have them as separate lots, we're just gonna include those onto the adjacent residential lots.
When do you expect building to start?
I'm sure my client would say as soon as possible. However, we have some procedural issues, so tonight, if we're, if we have the benefit of receiving an approval for preliminary, we would have to come and revise our plans and come back to the board again. So as soon as possible is the answer, but I don't think I can do any better than that because we have to work through the procedure here at the township.
Okay.
That's, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, so, oh.
Where you go?
If he's still there, I just wanted to make record, the gentleman identified that that was his wife speaking as well, just so, just in case.
There's another individual, NJ, has their hand up? We get them on?
Sir, you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to provide to the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
It's Nelson Jacobovich. Last name is J-A-C-O-B-O-V-I-T-C-H. The address is 722 Green Valley Road, Jackson.
Okay, you're on.
Can you spell, hang on, I apologize, through the chairman. Can you spell your last name a little slower, please? We did not get.
Sure, sure. Okay, so I, I just actually purchased this property, plan on moving here. Not opposed to anything in the, the plan's actually looking forward to having more neighbors, but the roadway will be taking away the entire privacy of our backyard along the entire strip. So I was just wondering if there was anything that you'd be able to do, is there gonna be fences put up or trees alongside the roadway? I'm lot 17.
So that, that would be your side yard, not your rear yard?
No, it goes along my whole entire backyard.
Okay, well, it's actually your side yard. We could add, there is a detention basin that's in there. We could add additional landscaping for privacy?
Yeah, that, that would be like the main, main concern. Otherwise, I'm not opposed to anything.
Okay. We'll work with the board's professionals to enhance the buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. One more. N.E.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If you'd kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to provide to the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Ann Irvin, E-R-V-I-N. My current address is 23 Drylow Drive, Allentown, New Jersey, but I own the property on lot 26 that I currently rent.
All right, ma'am, I apologize, just was with, I guess, the Zoom, and I was watching, yeah, we didn't get your last, your last name or your current address. Can you speak a little more slowly? I apologize.
Sure, it's A-N, A-N-N, last name, E-R-V, like Victor, I-N. 23 Drylow, D-R-I-A-L-O Drive, Allentown, New Jersey.
And again, you indicated you also own lot 26 as shown on this map.
I do.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I have a question as to where the new property line would be behind the structures that I have on my property already, towards the back of where the planned building will be.
Okay. They're getting information for you.
Okay.
They're looking.
Can we confirm that that is one of the lots on Brewers Bridge Road?
It is.
Okay. She, she's one of the owners. Ma'am, you're one of the owners, part of?
I am.
I can answer that question, it's just a bit unusual.
So, well, let's ask it this way, ma'am, did you consent to this application?
Well, I did consent to it. It's been lapsed, and now currently there is nothing in place.
It's, so the new property line will be 195.2 feet from the back of your shed?
That doesn't appear to be, that seems almost double from what I was told originally.
I don't know what was indicated before. Again, there was, there was an application. My indication is that my client has. There was an agreement in place. Ms. Ann, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last name, signed the, the consent form as far as, I'm not sure what, the statement that there's nothing in place now. I don't, I don't know what that is.
It is what it is. The original agreement had lapsed and was not renewed. So at this point, I'm not really sure how I can still be involved if I have no legal agreement.
Is it possible to take a five-minute recess? I.
I would suggest that. She's a.
This is the first I'm hearing of this. I just need.
This is a jurisdictional question. I'll just put this on the record, and so that there's a framework within which to work this, just to make sure you and I are on the same page. And the board, if, if you cannot resolve this, I would recommend to the board, this is, I have to say, this is something new to my 30 years of doing this, that, that the board allow the applicant to carry the matter without further notice to some short period of time to report back as to what the issue is. We can then discuss what further steps the applicant would have to take, but if, if I don't, Mr. Chairman, I have no issue, wait one second, I apologize, to giving them five minutes to contact the app, the.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Urban, if I may, just, just to clarify, if you were told that it was less than 195 feet, then, then it would mean that you're actually getting more area than, than what you originally agreed or anticipated. So it's not you're getting less, you would actually be getting more. So I just want to clarify that. We're still gonna need our, our time to discuss it with our applicant, but I just wanted, before we took the break, I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Just double checking.
Okay, no, I would if I were you also.
Well, so does that satisfy your concern?
Well, my other concern is there's no legal issue between us binding contracts, so my, my concern is this continuing without that being in place. My concern is this continuing without that being in place.
Why don't you take the five minute break?
We'll take a five minute break while this is being resolved. Thank you. We'll be right back to you, ma'am.
Okay, very good.
Were able to work it out with that?
Mr. Chairman, so I, I had an opportunity to speak with my client. He indicated he is the contract purchaser. Indicated he, he is, as far as he understands, he's full, um, fully entitled with regard to his contract. As far as the consent form, the consent form does not expire. We submitted this application, has gone back for some time. I, I would ask that at this time that we proceed with the application with the understanding that during, that during resolution compliance, we would have to provide full copies of contracts, redacted. If not, a statement from the parties once they speak, uh, that we're all, that we're on the same page and everything is resolved. This is again, this is only preliminary approval. And there's still later on, there's still a requirement if we do the subdivision map of parties having to sign it. So they're going to have to resolve this, uh, matter either way. There, there is no issue. There is no issue proceeding at this time, um, because it doesn't hurt either party.
Right, we're here to discuss some land use. You know, if there's any kind of a, um, issue with, with the owners, that's something out of our jurisdiction, that's for sure.
And, and Mr. Harry, I, I, I would agree with that. I think the, the homeowner who articulated it has sufficient protection in this particular circumstance, particularly given its preliminary approval. And, uh, Mr. Pfeffer, if you could make the representation, the purchase is only for a partial portion of the lot, not the entire lot anyway?
I believe so, that is correct, yes.
So there, there are protections built into the process. For that particular homeowner. As to the board's jurisdiction, the board has a consent in front of it signed, I believe, June of two thousand twenty, that has no expiration date.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, this is Terrence Wall. A quick question for Sean Gertner?
Yes.
I, I just want to confirm that, are, are you maintaining that this applicant has standing? I'm just expressing my concerns on that. And to what extent any additional matters that are put on the record have any potential impact? On any claims?
So that's exactly it. The board, all, all the board has to work on is a written consent. And an applicant who relied on that consent. To obtain jurisdiction over a portion of this particular lot. That's the first piece of the answer to the question. Secondarily, as to, um, protections, I mean, there, the other alternative. The, the board cannot be in a position of adjudicating the argument between. The applicant and the contract, the contract seller and the contract, uh, and the contract purchaser. The contract seller has, in my opinion, adequate protections. If for some reason that contract to which she relied on to, to provide the board with jurisdiction over a lot, over her lot. If she has an argument over that, the existence of the contract, that becomes an issue in the civil courts between the two. And then further processing thereafter would have to be stayed, at least as to that lot.
And, and so just to, just to finish, by us continuing to move along and potentially creating a thing of further value, we're not involving ourselves in a future legal process?
No, that's not so. For instance, if, if the board were to continue. And then the, and, and this is something for the board to debate then. If the, if the board were to continue and the homeowner. Would then have the opportunity, for instance, within the forty five day period to file a. A complaint in lieu of prerogative writs to vacate that portion of the preliminary approval that, um, addressed that particular lot. She would have that, she would have that right. Now, I'm not, the, the problem becomes, I'm not so certain, she would have that right regardless, as any member of the public would.
Counselor, you, you don't have to clarify this for me. We had a homeowner under oath state that she doesn't have an agreement. But yet she has a consent. So that's the board's understanding. But how can they be a contract purchaser if they're saying, if she's saying under oath that she doesn't have a, a contract?
Well, how did they get, so I'm sorry.
I don't know, that's on.
So, you know, with this being said, I hear now the questions. Mr. Pfeffer, while, I, you know, uh, it would be my opinion that the board could continue. You have the, a legitimate risk raised by one board member, you have a question of the other. I think it would behoove all respectfully, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I, I think listening to the board's concerns, I think it would behoove all parties. To carry the matter. We could, is there, what I would suggest be done, just for, was there any other member of the public wishing to speak?
We saw the public, uh, comment period open and she's still on the.
Well, what I'm saying, and, and Mr. Chairman, this is also for the board's acceptance, or because it's the board's call, but certainly not mine, is that you could continue, um, public. Close public and then prior to deliberation, carry the application to get an answer to the question raised and come back. That way that it doesn't, the, the application doesn't have to be reopened totally. The board could then deliberate based on the facts and then move forward. I think that would be the most, most time efficient way to handle the matter.
Yeah, I guess, at this point, I think that's, that's where we're headed. The only thing I would ask that, since the application, again, we have no other testimony unless there are any other questions from any board members. We would just be asked to carry this to the next meeting so we could just provide to the board the proofs. That we've indicated on the record. At this point, I mean, there's, like I said, there's no other testimony but for any deliberation. And comments.
Okay, um, Anthony, can you bring Ms. Irvin back?
Do you bring, is, is the homeowner still on? Can you bring her?
Phil, you heard what we were talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, I mean, as far as, uh, what's going on, we're, um. We're looking at land use here. Okay, you have some kind of an issue with the rest of the group involved in the application. We need to get more information on that, just to, um, rectify some of the things we do. But, uh, it's not our main thrust.
Of course.
Okay?
Yes.
And they did talk to you?
They have not spoken to me yet, no, this evening, no.
I, I gather they will sometime in the future. Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, very good.
Okay. There was nobody else from the public had their hand raised, so motion to.
Let's, just give it, just for safety's sake. Not yet, so I apologize through the chairman. Mr. Jacob, is there anyone else who's come on? Sorry, just, all right, it's better to double check.
All in favor? Okay. Any other comments, uh, Michelle? Any, uh, any questions, Mr. Recker, you have any?
No, I, I just think, given the, the objection being on the record, that there should be some time for them to sort it out because it's a, it's a perilous place for us to be. And it didn't start with us. I don't want it to finish with us either. So I would recommend that they clear it up. And I would ask Mr. Gertner, just for the record. We did not get a retraction from this young lady for her consent. In paper.
I have an obligation, I'll follow up with her as well.
Yeah, I would, you know.
I, I appreciate.
I, I think that if she did retract it. She should have done it in paper, in fairness to the applicants.
I, I think as, as I indicated, and I think, uh, my, our professionals indicated as well is. That's, that's why we keep, we do, that's why they call it the practice of law, right? Everything, something, something new again. So I appreciate the board's input on, on that through the chairman. And given Ms. Campbell's, uh, notification, I think the recommendation would be.
To carry. I'm sorry, we're okay carrying it, the, the May seventeenth meeting, and there's nothing on the agenda anyway, it, it's a holiday. I am here on June seven, uh, with another application. Hopefully by then it should be, gives about just shy of a month, should be able to resolve everything, get all the proofs there if we can, just listed on that evening.
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, I, I have no issue respectfully recommending if this matters. The Luxor Drive, uh, fourteen twenty six LLC. Block thirteen four oh one, lots two point oh two, four point oh one, fifteen sixteen, twenty four and twenty six. Be carried to the June seven, two thousand twenty one meeting without the requirement of further notice. The applicant and the public are directed to the municipal website and municipal places of publication. Though the record should reflect that the meeting has been closed to the public. It will only be open to board deliberation unless the applicant requires new testimony based on discussions with the particular homeowner.
They have a motion for that? All in favor? Thank you. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.